Good morning, everyone. Heartiest welcome. Glad to see you this morning. Thanks for participating in your county government. This time I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners work session for February the 28th to order. And Marshall, Rodden, if you bring it list forward for me. If you've got your phone on, unless it's a real nice tune, turn it off. Thanks, sir. We have Commissioner Stover on the phone with us, so he is here. We should have put a picture of him up or something here, but we didn't get that taken care of. At this time, if you'll stand with it, we'll begin with our invocation and our pledge. Heavenly Father, we just bow humbly before you, thanking you for a new day, thank you for an opportunity to serve Paulding County, and thank you for these department heads and law enforcement here and all they do for the county and get prepared for these meetings. We seek your guidance, oh Lord, and we know that we need it. Your ways are higher than our ways, your thoughts are higher than our thoughts. So we just submit this meeting to you, and just thank you for all you do and for your love and your salvation through Christ. In his name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Regarding the minutes, the February 14th, 2023 work session minutes, February 14th, 2023 board meeting minutes are available for your review and on the back table there under announcements. We're going to begin with a segment on the consequences of liberty under our team Paulding segments, so.
Liberty.
What did I say? Liberty? The consequences of littering.
owners are also partly to blame. Truck owners often use their truck beds as mobile garbage cans. Sure, it's handy, but trash doesn't always stay put. Under Georgia's litter law, anything leaving a vehicle, intentional or not, is litter and can result in a citation. Georgia taxpayers spend millions of dollars every year to remove trash that blows from truck beds. Thank you for watching and helping keep Paulding beautiful.
End up for another Academy Award.
He does think he's a movie star now.
He's married to this lady over here. Steve, to know him is to love him. Also, this morning, we'd like to present a plaque to someone who's been with the county and with DOT for a very long time to recognize Mr. David, actually Walter David Thompson. And I've got a plaque for David, and he served 41 years with the Department of Transportation. And before I ask him to come up, I'm going to read a little bit of his work bio. David Thompson, a lifelong resident of Paulding County, was employed at the Dallas Rock Quarry in the early 1980s. The Paulding County Board of Commissioners purchased the Dallas Rock Quarry, which began David's career with Paulding County Road Department on June the 6th, 1981. Over the course of 41 years, David operated heavy equipment within the grading crew and was promoted to the paving crew supervisor to which he continually, or which he currently serves until his retirement this week. David and his crew have successfully resurfaced and maintained close to 1,000 miles of county roads. His family includes his wife Linda, 49 years, daughters Jenny and Samantha, one grandson, and his late daughter Dorothy Lee. Plans after retirement are to enjoy his family gardening and hunting. David has been an essential part of the Department of Transportation and the transformation of Paulding County. His knowledge, experience, and work ethic for Paulding County is irreplaceable. Thank you, David, for your commitment over the last 40 years to Paulding County, and if you'll come forward with any or all of your family members. I thought you might also have a number of nights that you've been called out in the middle of the night for a flood or a downed tree or something.
The trees during a rainstorm is the worst.
Trees during a rainstorm is the worst, he says, so.
Are you sure you're ready to leave us?
Not really, but at times I'm getting too old to hang with these young fellows.
Y'all calling up and kind of get on either side of David here, and this is a pretty plaque that I think probably should go in a special place.
Right side of steer.
Right side of steer. No doubt. Presented to Walter David Thompson in grateful appreciation for 42 years of dedicated service to Paulding County Government by the Paulding County Board of Commissioners. So congratulations. Thank you so much for all your work. Under invited guests, we don't have any guests invited to speak or anything. Under bid awards, item two, is to award the 2023 Asphalt Project Contract One to the lowest bidder, Northwest Georgia Paving Incorporated, in the amount of $6,277,176.170. Let me start over. Roads scheduled in the contract are located in post one, two, and three. The funding for this project is from the fiscal year 2023 LMIG grant and general funds and sploshed. Ms. Pollard, Mr. Jones are here to, all right, that doesn't look like Mr. Jones. Erica Parrish is here to further describe this award.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to share this exciting contract. This is the first asphalt contract for 2023 that we'd like to present to the board for consideration. This contract includes 14.68 miles of milling, patching, leveling, and plant mix resurfacing on 10 county roads, all of which are in post one, two, and three. Asphalt Contract One was advertised January 6th of this year. Bids were received, three bids were received on February the 3rd, 2023, and Northwest Georgia Paving Company was the lowest responsive bidder. The lowest bid was $6,277,170.86, which was 31% lower than the county estimate. We would like for the Board of Commissioners to consider this at the BOC meeting later this afternoon, please.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Erica? Okay, for number three is very similar. I approve the 2023 Asphalt Project Contract Number Two to the low bidder, Northwest Georgia Paving Incorporated, in the amount of $4,961,377.60. The roads scheduled in this contract are located in post two, three, and four. The project will be funded by general funds and splosh special purpose local ops and sales tax. And we have Erica along with Ms. Pollard, if needed, and I think everybody might hear you better if you either pulled the mic towards you or.
Okay, yes, sir. Again, thank you for the opportunity to share this contract. This is Contract Two of 2023 for asphalt resurfacing. This contract includes 13.6 miles of milling, patching, leveling on six county roads in Paulding County. These roads are within post two, three, and four. Asphalt Contract Two was advertised January the 6th of 2023 with three bids received on February the 3rd, 2023. The lowest responsive bidder was Northwest Georgia Paving in the amount of $4,961,377.60. This amount was 24% lower than the county's estimate, and funding for this project would be general funds and splosh.
Any questions for Ms. Parrish?
Could you get all our contractors to bid below the estimates for the year?
We'll ask very nicely.
I think we've got you for number four also. No? Okay. While we were learning about asphalt, I recognized an elected official in the back, Sheriff Gullidge. Glad to have you here, and not elected, but a special guest is Randy Harris in the back, our public defender. Always glad to have y'all here. So item number four is to award the Brazewell Mountain Control Valve Contract for Construction Services to Wade Coots Construction Company Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $252,000 from the renewal and extension fund. The project's located in post four, and we're going to hear from you, aren't we, Tabitha?
Yeah. So I'm sitting in for Ray. Ray's had another obligation this morning. Bids were open on January 26th for this project. Three bids were received. Those bids ranged from 250, the low bid of 252,000 up to 385,200. Engineer's estimate was 347,140. So again, we're under the engineer's estimate. Garver USA is the engineer of project, on this project, and they have issued a recommendation of award to us, and we have quite a bit of work history with the contractor, the low bid contractor, Wade Coots, and we're confident they can complete the project. A little bit more about the project. The project includes using a modulating valve for the control of the Brazewell Mountain tank to allow the decommissioning of the Brazewell Mountain pump station. We'll continue to use that pump station as a backup. The connection and operational strategy will increase the flow provided by Richland Creek Water Treatment Plant and reduce pressure swings on the system. This addition to the system will effectively fill and drain the tank by closing and opening a control valve. So basically, I think it'll make water flow more timely rather than times of high pressure and low pressure. The project was approved by the Water and Sewer Board. The lead time for the project is about four months, and the project is being funded with renewal and extension funds through the water system.
Any questions about that bid award? We have, are honored to have Ms. Dieter Holden here, the Director of Elections and Registration, to update us on the 2022 audit that's been recently completed. Dieter, so good to have you.
Thank you. Okay. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to recap 2022 and talk about the future of our elections. I didn't do y'all a printed inspiration this morning, and I just wanted to speak one to you. In the first week of January, when we came back from New Year's, we had a state training in Athens, and it was put on by the Secretary of State, and they had different people to come in and speak with us. And one of those speakers was our previous agricultural commissioner, Mr. Gary Black. And he said something that has resonated with me and kind of changed the attitude of the way we need to wake up every day and look at our opportunities. But you know, I know when we all go to bed on Sunday night, we always get up and we think, oh, my gosh, I got to go to work today. But what he said was very profound. Instead of having an attitude of I've got to, we need to have the attitude of we get to. We here in Paulding County get to serve almost 200,000 people every day. You all were elected to do that, and you do a phenomenal job. Frank, you do a phenomenal job of being a county manager, and I'm going to thank you for that, and you get to do that. So I just wanted to say that because I'm honored to get to serve the voters of Paulding County and the people. You know, I think we're the best county in the state of Georgia, and we do get to serve every day, and I think that's what I'm called to do. I know it is, and I know that's what you're called to do. So I wanted to take that opportunity of change your got to attitude to I get to attitude, and I think your days will be better. So I just wanted to start out with that. Now I'm going to move on because I don't want to take up a lot of time, but here we go. In 2022, we were very busy. We conducted six elections. Two of those, which were special open primaries, had to be conducted separate and apart. So not only did we have the regular elections going, we were conducting a separate and apart election for the post three commission race. I wanted to give y'all numbers. I'm kind of like Ann. I was thinking about Ann the whole time I was doing this because she loves numbers. I wanted to tell y'all the total number of votes we handled, okay? So absentee by mail for all these elections, we issued and took care of 10,294. Absentee in person, 86,678. I want to note on the bottom there, the general election, we voted 40,337 people face to face in 23 days. For the general election runoff, in five days, we voted 29,212 people. So needless to say, we were dragging come Christmas time. And I have to thank Frank because in the tenure of being in this building, we moved into this building in December of 2008, I've never had to have traffic control, but we had to have traffic control because there were so many people voting. And I want to thank the marshals for helping us out with that because we could not have done it without the marshals' help. Election Day for all of these elections, we voted 68,767. Our general election, we had about a 59% turnout, and then the runoff, we had a 51% turnout. So people are voting. I'd love to see those numbers up, but you know, you just take what you can get and just thankful for the voters that do come out. We had 124 provisionals in all of those elections. So this number is what I want you to look at. 165,863 votes were entrusted to the Paulding County Elections Office. That means a lot to me because in this day and time, you know, elections are now becoming on the forefront, and there's been a lot of misinformation and disinformation out there, but 165,863 votes, that's a lot of votes for this county. So I want to thank the voters for coming out and casting their vote. This is something that we're very proud of. With all of these people showing up to vote in the primary, our highest wait time was 20 minutes. The special was five minutes. The primary runoff was 10 minutes. The special runoff was zero minutes. The general election, if you all are familiar with our back parking lot, if we had lines down to the mid sidewalk of, next to the judicial building, about 15 minutes, and then we, during the runoff, had people lined up all the way in front of the sheriff's office. That wait was only 30 minutes, and we have this to thank for it. We have the poll pads that printed their certificates, and I'm very proud to say that in November, it was a 42-second average on processing a voter, and then in the December, 39 seconds, and that's phenomenal. We were getting phone calls from our state reps saying, what's going on up there? We're getting good phone calls. Y'all are processing these voters. So we're very proud of that. So I wanted to show you, we can also, the computer screening stuff there is called ePulse. All of the poll pads that we use during early voting, we can look at if their battery's low, if they're not on, if there's a problem with it, but it also gives us immediate responses of how many people are voting and what that percentage is. So very proud to be a part of this. The entire state did not get to use this. Paulding County was selected to be a pilot of this. Y'all know we're always going to volunteer because we want to see what's going on, but very, very pleased with what we saw. Hopefully, we'll see these in our future. Staffing. We have five board members, six full-time staff, including myself. We use about 10 temps in the office for absentee office and warehouse, 60 poll workers during early voting, and that's during, that's for three locations, and 300 Election Day poll workers. We cannot do it without this extra help, and I want to take a moment to recognize my staff. If you'll stand up, these are the ones who keep me going. They are the ones who make this work, and they do a phenomenal job. They work, you know, sometimes in one week, they can work 80-plus hours, and they never complain. They're always there, weekends, nights, whatever we need. So I want to thank them for doing everything that they do. I appreciate y'all. We have 130,000 voters in Paulding County. One of our board members brought me an old newspaper from 1994 to our last board meeting. In 1994, Paulding County had 13,394 voters. I would say that we have grown quite a bit in the 20 years that we've, we've seen, or 30 years, I'm sorry. It's amazing just to see the changes that I've seen in my tenure of getting to do this. But 130,000 voters, I remember when we got 100,000, we had a celebration, and I thought, this will be all that we get. People are still moving here, and they are still registering to vote, and they're moving here because we have the best county in the state of Georgia. Our audit, I was a little skeptical and nervous about this because you never know what could happen, but I appreciate y'all for asking for this audit. We did a 100% audit, and we conducted it after the December runoff on those results. Out of 58,890 votes, Paulding County was two votes off. And in the meeting, the training that we had in January, Secretary Raffensperger bragged on us for doing this because I was panicking because we were two votes off. I wanted it to be perfect, and I'm still going over in my mind, how could this be? Because we accounted for all the votes, but it was just one vote that was flipped. So I'm very proud of that, and hopefully, in the future, we'll be afforded the opportunity to do this after all elections because it's important to me for our voters to trust our system and to know that we are doing what we're supposed to be doing and that their vote does count. So two votes off, I'll take it any day, but would love to have zero, but happy with two votes being off. It took us two and a half days and about 60 people to do this. One thing that y'all know that you see a lot in the news is about elections, and here are some of the media outlets that have been here and interviewed us and done documentaries, and I'm very proud of that because not only are we local and nationwide, but we're also worldwide. And I often wonder when they're interviewing me, the people that's sitting over in London, England, trying to figure out my southern twang. But anyways, it's been very interesting getting to know these people. The Washington Post shadowed our office on the November election, and I thought these people were local, but no, they flew in just to be with Paulding County. So very proud to be getting the time to educate people about elections because I do think there's a lot of misinformation out there. And did I mention that in 2022, the Elections Office responded to over 1,300 open records requests, and we had to respond to every one of them? And I know I've worn Jason Phillips out, but that's one thing that I want to make sure that we always stay up on is our open records because they're very important. One thing that we're also very proud of is in 2022, we created VOICE, which is Voter Outreach Information and Communication Exchange because we want to recruit stakeholders for our elections. We want the voters involved, the parties involved, the municipalities, candidates, civic organizations, taxpayers, and government departments to be a part of this with us because we want to know what the voters want. We want to know if they have a good location for us to have a precinct. So we've had two meetings so far. The first one we held here, and Ms. Dawn was the only one to show up, but we're not going to stop. We had another meeting in February, or late January, I'm sorry, had it at the City Hall in Hiram and had a good turnout. But the more people are engaged with elections, the more the voters feel like they're part of this, and they are, the more education we're going to get out to the public, and that's what we need. So if you all ever get the chance to come to one of these meetings, we do them quarterly. Our next one is in April, so try to come if you can. Lot of good information's given out, but we give the people the opportunity to speak and tell us what they like, what they don't like. Looking ahead, right now, we're in the middle of the implementation of the new statewide voter registration system, which is called Jarvis, not Garbus, Jarvis. But we're doing that, and it's been a little trying, but this is the newest system. Our last statewide voter registration system was implemented in 2012. This is a good system, and we're just working on it day by day. There's changes. There's a lot of things to work on. Polling location changes, we will be making these by the end of the year due to availability. We've had two polling locations that no longer want us to use their facilities, and safety is because of us being in the school system. And we are looking to move out of the elementary schools and into the middle schools and high schools. Met with the school system, they're on board with this. However, the only two that we cannot touch right now because we have nowhere to move them are the two busiest, which is Russell and Shelton, which is in post four. The school has agreed to let us continue to be there until the new middle school, and we'll start using that new middle school in 2026. So we are looking for polling locations. If you all know of anything that you think might work for us, please let us know because we are, we are struggling with this. Implementation of online poll worker training and testing these poll workers. We want to know that they know what they're doing. That's important because getting out there on Election Day, we do this every day. They do it maybe four times a year, and it's important that they know how to handle situations. We will also be conducting the municipal elections for the city of Dallas and the city of Hiram this November. Looking ahead to 2024, it will be here before we know it. Uh, looking ahead to two thousand and twenty-four, it will be here before we know it. We're, I mean, y'all, we're in March, it's just hard to believe. But we're looking at a twenty-five percent higher turnout rate. If we don't have any special elections to pop up, we'll conduct five elections in two thousand and twenty-four. Um, the proposed date for the Presidential Preference Primary will probably be Super Tuesday, which will be, um, March the fifth. But that date is to be determined because that date is set by the Secretary of State. That's also the normal week that we would conduct qualifying for our local, um, primary. So they're looking at those dates, they may push the PPP up into February. But if they do keep the March date, we're looking at starting testing in January, on January twenty-second, and then early voting will start February twelfth. So technically, we're less than a year away from starting the voting process. Uh, we will start in August, planning for the PPP, and, um, it's, it's going to be busy. So y'all just keep us in your prayers, social law's going on. We'll also conduct a May primary, a runoff, a general election, and a general election runoff. That's all I have. If you have any questions, please let me know. Uh, I'm always available, so is my staff. I appreciate the support you always give us in all these departments. It takes a village to do elections. If I started to name all the people that helped us, I would leave somebody out. But our departments are so good to lend help. Tabitha, your finance department is wonderful. I don't know what we would do without driving Michelle crazy with payroll. Um, but, you know, our sheriff's department, everybody just pitches in and helps us, and we could not do this without them, and I just want to publicly thank them and thank you all for always being so encouraging and so supporting. So if you have anything, just let me know.
Dieter, uh, thank you for your, uh, little notes that you do put up here, uh, every meeting, uh, and for that story you told. What are you doing for the cities this year?
So we will do, um, their elections. Uh, they will have, uh, different offices on the ballot. That will start, we'll start their early voting in October. And then, uh, early voting for Dallas is here, early voting for Hiram is at the Events Place. So we'll start working on that. Those, those elections are easy and quick, but still, they have to be conducted just like the other ones do. And we, the only thing we don't do for them is their qualifying. So everything else, we'll do their early voting, we'll do their election day voting, and they will handle the qualifying for offices.
I wanted to just say thank you so much to you and your whole department and your board uh, for doing that audit and being cheerful and cooperative about it. Uh, because some, you know, we read about places where people get very defensive about things. And you know what? When, when we have a system and we have confidence in it, we don't have to be, do we? Uh, and so I just appreciate it. We asked for a risk-limiting audit, which is a very small, like a portion audit, and, uh, you guys decided, or the board decided, to do the whole thing. I also appreciate the citizens who came up and, and brought their concerns to us so that we could do something about it instead of just grumbling in the background and, and causing problems out there. I think it was great that they came forward and that, uh, we all were able to communicate in a healthy, respectful way and get something done that showed that, in fact, in Paulding County, our system, uh, worked super well. So I'm very proud of all of you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I'll just echo that, it couldn't be said any better. Uh, just a great report. Thanks for going into the data there. I think, uh, the full board appreciates it, and we needed to, to get that recap. So thanks, Dieter. Great job. Well, next is the public participation, uh, on agenda items, and we don't have anybody that signed up. So we'll move on to the consent agenda, which I need to read this morning. It's consideration of the following items. Item number five is Recreation Board Appointment, uh, with the term, uh, January the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, uh, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven, which is Paul Taylor, post-three appointment, and Debbie Lossick, which is also a post-three appointment. Item six is to approve the Paulding County Revised Alcohol License Fee Schedule. Item seven is to accept the below list of streets for perpetual maintenance by the county. Cedar Mill, Phase Seven A is a part-chase lane and part-chase court. The first one there in Leland, on Leland Court, and the second on Leland Circle. Also Cedar Mill, Phase Seven, uh, B is a Leland Crossing, and Cedar Mill, Phase Seven C, Zimmer Woods Crossing. So those are the streets that will take over, uh, if this passes this afternoon. We have no old business, uh, this morning. Under New Business, item eight is Discuss Action to Adopt Ordinance Twenty-three dash zero-three, Amendment, uh, to Charter Six of the Official Paulding County Code, Provide for the Issuance of Distilled Spirits Manufacturing Licenses. And we're going to ask our county attorney, Jason Phillips, to tell us some more about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just to put it in context, the state of Georgia, uh, regulates three types of alcohol, uh, malt beverage beer, wine, and distilled spirits. And in regard to that, there are generally three types of licenses. There's a license for consumption on the premises, uh, i.e. restaurants. There is a license for package sales, that's the retail sales of alcohol for consumption off the premises. And then there's also a manufacturing license. Paulding presently has, uh, manufacturing licenses for beer and wine. And with the passage of the referendum back in November, it's now possible to create a manufacturing license for distilled spirits. Given the popularity, uh, that I think some have seen in North Georgia about what they call distilleries or the manufacturing of distilled spirits, this ordinance revision creates a license to allow that to occur in Paulding County. Uh, it is, uh, basically modeled after our brewery ordinance, and it is also very specific in that it conforms to the requirements of state law. State law does authorize some on-premises consumption at the distillery, uh, but there are limitations on that, much like, you know, much like breweries. Be happy to answer any questions that y'all all have. Again, it's just a manufacturing license for distilled spirits.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips, and, um, uh, Mr. Baker for your work on that together. No other questions, move on to New Business number nine, which is Discuss Action to Authorize the County to Participate in Nationwide Settlement Agreements Regarding Opioid Litigation with Teva, uh, Allergan, I guess is the way you say that, CBS, Walgreens, and Walmart in conjunction with the state of Georgia, and authorize the chairman and the county attorney to execute all documentations related there, too. Mr. Phillips.
All right, commissioners, uh, this is the third, uh, of the national opioid settlements. The state of Georgia, along with many jurisdictions around the nation, have previously entered into settlements with, uh, I believe it's Janssen Pharmaceuticals, as well as another group of distributors. Uh, we have, when, when the Attorney General for the state of Georgia, uh, agrees to have this state enter into settlement agreements, uh, the AG then turns to the local jurisdictions and encourages participation in those settlements. The idea with opioid litigation is that there has been, let's just say, some, some debate as to what the impact of opioids has been on the local economy and the local citizenry. Uh, these settlements are designed to take and settle using money from the manufacturers, from the distributors, and from pharmaceutical companies to pool a pot of money that the county can then use to help alleviate the adverse effects it caused by opioid addiction, uh, whether that be education, training, uh, treatment, uh, Narcan, uh, Nar- Narcan, uh, products that are used by law enforcement to literally bring those that have OD'd back from, uh, back from a, I don't know about back from the grave, but back to life. Uh, Narcan is a product that does that, and these, uh, these funds can be utilized for that. In the two previous settlements, the county has now received, uh, roughly five hundred thousand dollars to go toward use in Paulding County to address, uh, opioid needs, uh, opioid remediation and education. This is yet a third. Uh, this is the latest settlement, and the Attorney General is inviting the local jurisdictions to participate. If y'all approve this, uh, we'll get signed up so that we can then receive our share. From a litigation perspective, it works out well. Others have done the litigating, and we just stand to receive some of the settlement reward. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Item ten is, uh, Discuss Action to Approve the May First, two thousand and twenty-three Employee Benefits Plan Renewal, uh, as presented. Ms. Palmer.
Good morning. How are you? Um, thank you for this opportunity. I want to kind of walk you through the process. We started this back in November. We've been working with NFP, and I want to thank Tammy Starkey for being here this morning. Um, we've been working with, uh, county manager, Ms. Pollard, some of the commissioners on this renewal. So what NFP did was they sent this out to do a market analysis. So when the quotes came back, we only received two quotes. We received a quote from Aetna, and we s- received, um, Humira. The other carriers declined to quote us. Um, Humira was a forty-four percent increase. Um, Aetna came back with a sixteen point five percent increase. But thanks to NFP, they negotiated in last year and put a cap on that of sixteen percent. If we'd not had that cap this year, the increase would have been twenty-six percent. Um, so what we have done is we have kind of looked at the plan to see what would be the best, um, for our employees, as well as county and taxpayers. So this is what we're proposing. We are proposing to increase employee deductions ten percent. Employee deductions has not been increased probably in the last eight to nine years. And then we are going to make some plan design changes. So what that comes down to, the initial increase was two point five million. So with these changes, we're able to get it down to a million and forty-nine thousand dollars. The good news is there's no increase to dental, there's no increase to the basic life or your voluntary life. Um, there's no increase to our Aflac benefits. Um, there is a increase to your, um, long-term disability, which was a twenty-five percent increase. Uh, NFP was able to get that down to a fourteen percent increase, which comes up to be twenty-nine thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars, I'm sorry, and that is a three-year guaranteed rate. Our short-term disability, twenty-five percent increase with Anthem. NFP got it negotiated down to fifteen percent increase. That's going to be an eighteen thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollar increase, and that's a three-year rate as well. So I am looking to, um, implement this May first. So if you have any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And finally, item number eleven in a new business is Discuss the Action to Authorize the County Manager to Sign a Vehicle Lease with Ford Credit for Two Explorers. This is funded with ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act funds, uh, and general funds. Ms. Pollard.
Um, in early two thousand and twenty-two, we received our first, um, American Rescue Plan Act that was awarded to the state, and then they were awarded through the AOC. This was to catch up on the backlog of cases for, through the court system. And then we received the grant in two thousand and twenty-two, um, we received the grant again in two thousand and twenty-three, and we'll apply again in two thousand and twenty-four. With the, the grant officially will end December of two thousand and twenty-four. This grant has allowed our court system to add personnel, um, hire outside judges, provide some small equipment needed for that personnel, and this one has some risk monitoring in it, as well as this vehicle lease. So this vehicle lease will allow the DA, um, the opportunity to be able to be remote, to be able to hear, to catch up on those cases, find, um, information that they need to have them heard. And it won't purchase the vehicles outright. So it will only apply for the, um, it will only allow, it would only allow him to apply to lease the vehicle. So in doing, what we're doing today is bringing you that lease. Um, that's a two-year lease, that was the shortest thing Ford would allow him to do. So we'll lease the vehicles for two years, um, through December of two thousand and twenty-four. And if the grant is sufficient in two thousand and twenty-four, which, um, yeah, going into two thousand and twenty-four, we expect it to be inclusive of that lease. There is a possibility that that's not included, but we have no reason to believe that it would be. In two thousand and twenty-two, we were awarded one point three million, and in two thousand and twenty-three, we were awarded one point three million.
You anticipate the same?
I would assume we anticipate the same. What's, the challenge of this grant has been the hiring of, the staffing of individuals, and we've experienced some, as well as other jurisdictions. So the grant funds were awarded, but two thousand and twenty-two wasn't spent as awarded, and two thousand and twenty-three isn't spent as awarded. And so two thousand and twenty-four, I would assume we would expect maybe some reduction, but not, um, it doesn't, we have no indication that it will be significant reductions.
Comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, um,
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the presentation, you were spot on with it. Um, this is unusual for the county. We don't normally lease vehicles. In fact, we've never, to my knowledge, leased a vehicle before, so this is quite unusual, and that's the reason why we wanted to bring it before the board for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Tabitha.
Is my understanding at the end of the lease, the county can purchase the vehicles outright, is that right?
Uh, yes, we're supposed to be able to purchase the vehicles for one dollar after the two-year lease is complete.
Okay, thank you.
Well, good work session, uh, that is the conclusion of a regular business. Um, no one has signed up, well, no one has called in to speak on non-agenda items. Uh, and so we, we come to the point at the end of our meeting here. If any of the commissioners have any comments, announcements, celebrations, recognitions, confessions?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank Tammy Starkey and her group from NFP. We worked really hard this year. We weren't surprised what was happening, but it, it did throw us for a little ru- uh, uh, loop. Um, but we worked through it, and I want to thank you for your time that you've put into it.
You know, I got a couple of things. Uh, Erica Paris, our deputy DOT, and I had the privilege of going down to the Transportation Committee yesterday, uh, at the General Assembly. Uh, and so I, I don't know if your state delegates would have time for you to call them or text them, but, uh, they've always got time, uh, to recognize that you're praying for them. So I'll just say, uh, pray for your state delegates. Uh, I know that they would appreciate that. And, um, tomorrow starts another month, March first, which is later on in March, is spring. So, um, Michael Justice, our Parks and Rec Director, sitting here between these pretty ladies on the wall there, uh, uh, has got all the parks ready for us to play in. They, they've been playing in them before spring, right, Michael? So, uh, a lot of places to hike and enjoy around the county. So I just encourage you to get out and enjoy the, the parks and the weather.
Mr. Chairman, could we see if Commissioner Stover had anything he wanted to mention?
Certainly.
Commissioner Stover?
No, I'm good. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. He's good.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion. Uh, we don't have any executive session, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Kakers, or a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Galloway, all those in favor, say. Second by Commissioner Galloway. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries 5-0.